All right, it looks like we've got our live feed to YouTube and recording is set. So I believe we'll begin our meeting. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Burlington City Council work session on November 2nd, 2020. Due to the continuing coronavirus pandemic, this meeting is again being held via the Zoom platform. Meeting is streaming live on the city of Burlington's YouTube page located at youtube.com/COBNC. And please note, this meeting is being recorded. If anyone is having any technical or connection difficulties, please contact our public information specialist, John Vernon, at 336-513-5440 for support. And for staff comments or to address councilor staff during the meeting, please indicate that you wish to do so at the appropriate time using the raise hand feature if you're joining us via Zoom or star nine if you're joining via phone. And our meeting host, IT Director Scott Bibler will notify me that you wish to speak at that appropriate time. As a preliminary matter, I am Mayor Ian Baltudis, and I'd like to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on this agenda are present and can hear me. Members present, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mayor Pro Tem Kathy Hikes.
Here.
Councilmember Jim Butler.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Harold Owen.
Here.
Staff presenting when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. City Manager Harden Watkins.
Here.
City Attorney David Huffman.
Here.
Interim City Clerk Beverly Smith.
Here.
Assistant City Manager Nolan Hookman.
Here.
Assistant City Manager Rachel Kelly.
Director of Finance and Risk Management Peggy Reese.
And Police Chief Jeff Smythe.
I'm here.
Very good. Thank you, everyone. With that, we'll begin our meeting. Item A is the utility payments update. I'd like to recognize Director of Finance and Risk Management Peggy Reese.
Thank you, council, for the opportunity to appear before you tonight. I'm going to share my screen. If Scott will allow me. Okay, can you see that?
We do have that now, Peggy.
Okay, um. So, as you were well aware, I'm going to review some things that I believe council is very familiar with, but for the benefit of the public who may, citizens who might be listening, I want to go over a couple of facts. You know, we had these executive orders that were issued by Governor Cooper that prevented utilities for shutting off customers for non-payment. There was also a follow-up executive order that said we need to allow customers at least six months to pay the past due amount. As a reminder, council approved staff taking the total balance due at the end of July and dividing that amount by six months for the payment plan. Somewhere along the way, well, let me go to the next screen. As a reminder, on our website, you can find three different ways that you can, a citizen can get assistance. One is downloading our payment plan. One is contacting our CDBG office. And now the third option is through NC Hope. Those are on our website, available for any of our citizens to apply for. And also a further detail, this is the CEBG that is a screen that's on our website that tells customers, gives them some information about how they may qualify for for assistance through CDBG. It seems like somewhere along the way that some of our citizens have gotten the wrong message that they don't need to pay at all. And that's not the message that was sent, you know, is that they had time to pay. And so we wanted to bring council up to date as to where we are. For the past due balances as of October 31st, there are 1,965 customers who are past due. And that is down about 1,000 customers from June 20, from June 30th of 2020. So that's headed in the right directions. We've brought 1,000 customers off of the past due list. However, the kind of bad news with that is that the past due balance has increased by about 50,000 for the remaining customers. We want to reiterate that we will work with our citizens and that we also want to let council know that we have door hangers were hung on approximately 1,000 homes. And those were customers who had balances past due greater than $100. We've had about 192 out of established payment plans, which was supposed to have been done by August 31st with the first payment due September 10th. Here we are, and it's November 2nd. We've given citizens, customers, an extra 60 days to try and establish a payment plan. Staff has worked with customers and will continue to work with anyone who's reaches out to the city. Again, I want to tell, reiterate that we've got three different programs. The CDBG, customers can go to the Women's Resource Center, the City Gate Dream Center, and now the North Carolina Hope Program. The last thing that I wanted to make council aware of tonight, that adopted in the city policy in July, we have these measures for what happens if customers don't pay. And we were going to start sending out delinquent notices that will have cutoff dates. Again, we are willing to work with anything with, with people who reach out to us, with those customers who reach out to us. But we have made multiple phone calls that, and left messages that have not been returned. And so we've had some, unfortunately, it's going to take this cutoff potential, I think, get some customers in to set up a payment plan or to maybe apply for CDBG. I do want to let you know that through the CDBG CARES funding, we've had 25 residents approved for a total of $5,031 applied to their past due balances. So that's part of the assistance. That's all I really had to tell you tonight, but I'll be happy to take any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Peggy. Any questions from City Council?
Are these recurring past dues, or do we have some getting current and then others going past due? Is it a mix? I mean, what are you seeing just in general?
It's primarily recurring. We don't, we're not having, you know, the unemployment rate went from a high of over 14% in April to now we're wide about 7.9%, I believe. So it, it is the, I would say more the recurring. We have customers calling all the time, when are you going to cut off? When are you going to cut off? So it's those who wait to the very last minute to cut us off, I mean, to make a payment.
Yeah.
Other questions? Peggy, are you seeing any trends in the data as far as the individuals, households that are not able to access these three resources that you mentioned?
That is very hard to tell. We don't, there's, there's no way for us to know who has applied or tried to apply but didn't get through. We've got the simple, you know, that's one of the reasons for bringing it up here tonight is to make sure, you know, we have it on our website. We posted notices on our water and sewer bills about these opportunities for the CDBG CARES funding or the other programs. And we, the last notice on the water bill talks about the Hope Program and points citizens to the directions of where they need to go to find out about it.
Have we seen anything as far as individuals who have created a payment plan as far as folks being able to keep up with that or falling behind on that payment plan?
There have been customers who have already started falling behind on that payment plan.
Peggy, what percentage of the total customers are the ones we have delinquent now? And if you could compare that back to pre-pandemic, how would that compare?
Well, we have about 25,000 water and sewer customers. So you're talking pre-pandemic level. I would say we're about double pre-pandemic level.
The reason I bring this up is that a lot of the communities that I work with now, small communities, you know, they tend to tell me that this is not, not nearly the issue that we've, we're facing, which I'm, I'm somewhat surprised because none of those communities are certainly financially challenged. So I'm not, I just wonder if indeed, we might have some people who had even got behind beforehand. And but this is a, this would be, what, what percentage of revenue are we looking at comparably here? If you had to take a guess based on this concept in terms of what's not collected, how would it compare to, to pre-pandemic time?
Well, we do our write-offs at the end of the year, so there is the potential for what our write-offs do since we're kind of double what our past due normally typically is on pre-pandemic level, have doubled the amount of write-offs. But I think there are two things. One is that I've mentioned before that customers are got the wrong message that they didn't have to pay at all. And then there are those who just said, well, I don't have to pay for six months because the governor said they couldn't cut me, cut me off if I didn't pay. And so they just kind of pushed that to the side. So I think, and our service department truly believes that once we start sending out delinquent notices, that that's going to get their attention and they're going to start applying some of their monies in this direction.
Okay, thank you.
Other council questions?
Peggy, I think it may be to make one of your, to eliminate one of the points. So what, the last time we conducted a cutoff was probably February?
Yes.
Yeah, so nobody's been cut off since February, so.
Right, yeah.
This is definitely something I appreciate that we've continued to keep an eye on as a council. Obviously, we, as a city, have provided this water and there's a cost associated with it. So the critical pieces, how do we, we pay for that? I'd be very curious, as Councilmember Owen pointed out, to see in future breakdowns, a breakdown of how many of these accounts that are delinquent were already delinquent prior to the pandemic and have continued that delinquency versus how many are pandemic-linked or post-pandemic delinquency? And then to look into the, any trends related to individuals who have attempted to take action on their account, so create a payment plan, requested some type of assistance or guidance, and then how they've, they've done. Because I think there's definitely going to continue to be challenges. I have no unrealistic expectation that we're going to get back to a number of accounts that we would have been in a normal year. But I'd like for us to see how much we can do and if there's any other gaps in this data.
One thing that we can see is that out of the thousand door hangers that we put on individuals' homes, so it didn't get lost in the mail. It was on their door and only 192 have actually applied for a payment plan. You have another 25 that went through CDBG CARES, so you're really looking about 20% right now have taken an action from those that did, that we did the door hangers on.
That's, it's not terrible for a single-touch kind of outreach program. Like you indicated, I'd be curious to see as we start to give them a cutoff date. Obviously, that's, that's somewhat soft in that we want to work with individuals because we want people to be able to continue to support their families and do what they need to.
Exactly.
I'd be curious to see how, how that impacts folks taking action on their account.
Peggy, I believe you, you weren't looking for any action this evening or tomorrow evening other than just council understanding that we're going to do something we haven't done since February in the very near future, which is to cut off some of our accounts.
Right.
Other council questions on this item?
Peggy, before we actually cut off, and I should know this, but I don't, the policy, do we contact them again?
That's what delinquent notice does. We send out a delinquent notice and it tells them that they've got 10 more days to make a payment, that they need to reach out to us. And if they don't, then they're water. And let's say 10 days from the day is the November 12th. Then if it went out today, then November 13th, it would be, if we haven't received any money or haven't heard from them at all, then we're going out to cut off.
So will all the notices go out the same day?
Oh, no. No, 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 no.
I was about to ask that too, Harold.
No, no, no.
I didn't think so, but I just want to make sure.
No, no, we are bill, we have cycles that, we have about 30 cycles and we're billing one or two, one every day. And so it's going to be cycle by cycle basis.
If all went out on one day, we all should take turns coming to answer the phone in your office.
That's right. That's exactly right.
Yeah, I would hope that we, we have the staff resources and we, we pace ourselves to make sure that we're able to provide the, the one-on-one kind of concierge assistance with folks to, to help them navigate this.
Right.
Any other questions?
Peggy, are you going to put your cell number on, on the notification?
I'm canceling my cell phone service.
Okay, just want to make sure.
All right. There are no other questions. We'll, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda. Thank you, Peggy. Item two on our agenda, Community Police Advisory Team or CPAT proposal. At this time, I'd like to recognize City Manager Harden Watkins.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I'll kick this off and make a few brief comments and give a summary of changes that we've made over the month of September and into October. And then I will yield to Chief Smythe if he wants to add any additional comments or clear up anything I may have stated incorrectly. And then, Mayor, I'll yield back to you and you want to get council comments and discussion. So I think we started back in July of 2020. Chief Smythe and I began working to develop a framework for council consideration of a Community Police Advisory Team is the, is the name we came up with. And the intent is to help improve quality of policing in Burlington, to provide an outlet for review and discussion of police policy and to help further enhance trust and confidence with, amongst the community of our police department and of city government in general. This proposal outlines a charter. Council's seen this, again, dating back to September. And the charter would create a team of Burlington community members. And then one of the changes we made along the way is that this team would be appointed by City Council. We would use the same format that we use with our other boards and commissions. So I think we've provided, I think council first spoke to you back in July, as I mentioned before. We put together a draft proposal that's dated 9.420, 9420. And that was presented initially at the September 14th council meeting. Following that September 14th council meeting, we moved copies of the draft and shared those throughout the community. Chief and I both distributed those out to folks that had commented or shared ideas and thoughts with us. We also had some good media coverage, especially back in September, that helped with sharing information about the proposal. And then Ms. Lassiter in Community Engagement Division has done a great job of, we have a post, a page on our police website. If anyone is, if anybody hasn't had a chance to see that, it's a great resource document of lots of police reform resources. And we have a direct link to the CPAT work and the copies of the two proposals. And then obviously, there's lots of other good materials there, but that's been on the website as well. We had posted a comment form on the city website to receive comments. As of late last week, Ms. Lassiter indicated that actually we had received zero comments via that comment form, which I find interesting in compared to our chicken item. We posted a similar comment form in similar style, received over 1,200 comments. I don't, I don't know what that says, but it's, it is interesting. Next thing I wanted to mention is just, so here's, here's the things that chief and I have done. And then I'll, I'll get into our latest round of changes. We have worked on a handful of revisions along the way. We published those revisions middle, middle toward the end of last week. But we've been working diligently on that with a handful of folks that have shared comments with us. We got two, we've had two rounds of comments and three Zoom meetings with the Almanza Agents for Change Group, including a smaller subcommittee of the group. We received a few verbal comments from ACT, ACT. Mr. Michael Graves, Reverend Larry Covington and Dr. Dorothy Arborough have shared some, some thoughts with us in our various conversations. And we've talked about other matters with them, not just CPAT, but have gotten some comments from them. We feel like we've blended those in, in sort of a general context. The other feedback the city has received via email has been approximately 10 people. And those asked just to be considered to be members of the new group when the group is formed. So that is our, that's the summary of what we received. And as I mentioned, Ms. Lassiter reported end of last week, we had not gotten any comments on the, the city website. So that's what we have done. Council, I'd remind you of the timeline that we posted back of September. We began that process and that led us to today. We, we obviously had it open for comment on October 6th at the city council meeting. We'll have it open for, plan to have it open for comment tomorrow. And then the idea was once council takes action, if you choose to take action tomorrow or you choose to take action later, that we would envision designing an application process, which I think can be ready to go fairly quickly as needed. And then to begin to take, take applications, our original schedule had Chief Smythe and I, you know, helping get that process rolling and getting you those names for December 8th. And then you could make an appointment as soon as December 8th, if you were ready for that. Obviously, that can push a week back, a month back, whatever feels comfortable to you. But then we felt like it was probably a 30 to 40 day, 30 to 45 day timeline to poll the, the selected members for time, date, location and figure out how to get started on the first meeting. Originally, we said maybe late January, if we need to push back, no problem on our end. You know, that could easily be later in the winter. It could be February, early March, whatever seems to, to be best for everyone involved. So now let me, that's the, the calendar. Now let me walk through the changes that we've made since we presented this back in September. The key changes, and there's, there's two, two versions. Council received all this towards the end of last week. There was the 94 version and then what we, what I have called the 10.2920 or the October 29th version. B1 is the version. So council, I provided you a clean copy if you were inclined and ready to adopt it. If not, that's, that's no problem. We're happy to make more changes. And then I gave you also the redlined version that had red text of words that had been added since September 4th and then strike through of words that had been deleted. So let me just do a few bullet points here that summarize that. And then I'll stop and let chief comment and then see if there are any council questions and comments. So we add in an acknowledgements section as Article 2. That was intended to provide broader context prior to outlining the mission and goals. So obviously, we had started with mission and goals in the previous version. This was suggested based on feedback from some of the folks that gave us comments. The next change was we added some wording to the mission section, Article 3. And the intent there was just to provide some additional clarity. Article 4, the goal section, former goal number two and former goal number four was blended, blended into other goals. We think the intent stays there, but there are now nine goals instead of 11. I think we had a little bit of redundancy there. There are more details in what is now goal number nine, which was formerly goal 11. That was suggested again based on feedback from persons that have been providing comments. Article 6, related to membership, and this is specifically some, some council comments and concerns. The new language provides clarification on how the selection process will work. Similar to the city's existing processes that are run through our community engagement group, we would envision all members would have to live into city limits and turn in the application. John Vernon, Public Information Officer manages that program for us. And again, that was changed was based on council feedback. The next change was in Article, also in Article 6 on membership was suggested from persons in the community offering comments that we have a racial equity learning opportunity added as a required, as a required or strongly encouraged component of member responsibilities that goes in line with, we also, in the same section where we ask folks to participate in the Community Police Academy. So this would be another idea along those lines. We could help facilitate those learning opportunities. If folks could, I think chief and I envision if that was left in the document, folks could seek their own learning opportunity or we could help facilitate and/or find programs. And there are lots of programs and opportunities available these days that are easy to get signed up for. Article 8, the meetings section, a section was added related to hosting public forums. This was a suggestion from persons in the community that were offering comments and probably would have been in our program of work anyway, just was not specifically called out. Two more bullets and I'll be done. Article 9, the members role. Based on the community feedback, we changed the expectation for police ride-alongs from required to encouraged. And I think there was some concerns expressed in the community that some members may not be physically able to participate or unwilling to do so because of past traumatic experiences. And so we, we changed that language, chief and I have suggested changing that language from required to encourage. And then finally, Article 13, it's been provided as a periodic charter review by the group, by the CPAT group as a method of continuous improvement. All the suggested, what we've, the way we've written that is all suggested changes will be scheduled for public comment in formal consideration by city council meeting at, by city council at a, at a advertised city council meeting. The idea was once the group gets rolling, if they wanted to suggest, suggest some changes that may improve the group, they're certainly free to do so, but it would require councils authority to either leave the group as is or make amended. We have recently obviously changed some of the roles and responsibilities of our minimum housing commission. We have changed and altered some of the duties and responsibilities of our traffic commission. So there's certainly a process where that naturally happens here at the city. And, and those conversations start with the, you know, border commission's staff liaison. And then obviously bubbles up to city council for comment and action. So we have a process for that. The remaining changes were more minor in nature and involve some degree of wordsmithing and fine tuning. Be happy if anybody had any questions on those, we'll be happy to elaborate. Mrs. Hikes shared a question with me. I think came in towards the end of last week. That we'll, we're happy to address and we can have some language ready tomorrow. But how will it be determined what is an excessive number of missed meetings? And, you know, as compared to unexcused, you know, talking about defining unexcused absences and making sure that the whole committee is equally committed to being at, at the meetings. I'll let Ms. Hikes speak for herself, but that was the one other comment that has come in since I provided some written materials last. So chief, did I, anything you want to add to, anything I stated incorrectly or other ideas, other comments you'd like to share?
That's spot on. I mean, it's been a lot of work and diligent back and forth between us and members of the community that we've been meeting with. But I feel like we've accurately captured to the best of our ability, the, the things that they're asking for that are, you know, in keeping with what we envisioned from discussion with you all. You know, we could put in a document that you would approve.
All right. Any questions from council?
I've, I've got a terrible question, Mayor. Let me, let me begin. I asked a question more than a month ago about what authority, you know, this board's been set up. You know, this is a Dillon Rule state and typically you've got to find somewhere in the statute, you know, to authorize this type of board. And, and, and I'm, Harden, do you recall me posing that question? I'm, I'm sure you do.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And I've talked to David Huffman about it. And obviously, you know, there's no specific authority, but I think it boiled down to 168, 146. And I think, and I would ask, you know, maybe shouldn't that be included? You know, by what authority this is set up? You know, I guess that's just a lawyer in me, is it, you know, by what authority is it set up? And I think some reference to 168, 146, I think would be helpful for anybody down the road want to know how, how and by what authority. All the other boards and commissioners have, have specific statutory authority. So unless there are some objections, you know, I don't, and this is a procedural question, you know, if, if you could add, I think it'd be helpful to add it. David, what's your take?
Yes, refer to that as well as the, I would say 168-4, the statute pertaining to broad construction, which basically says that the courts will allow the municipalities to use any sort of supplemental. use any sort of supplemental powers to try to accomplish what it is that your, their, their goal is in this particular. So I think the two provisions referenced would probably be instructive of those folks that coming back of us and want to know how we got there.
Okay, okay, that's good. At 168-4 would be good. Of course, obviously, this will change when 160D is put in effect, but we're, we're operating under, under 168 now. So having said that, and I believe I asked a question earlier about it, would, would it be subject, you know, to the open meetings law? And since the others have statutory bases, specific statutory bases, it's clear that they do. I would ask if, if you think it would be helpful to put, you know, these meetings, you know, maybe, maybe so, maybe not, but, you know, may say that, that, you know, the meetings are subject to the open meeting law. I, I think it would be helpful. I, I know that they will be, but, you know, if anybody asks, you know, they can be referred, you know, to the meeting section and just make reference to, you know, the open meetings law. Does anybody have any feeling about one way or another? You know, it may be one line in here. I don't know that it will hurt, and I honestly think it would help. Is there any problem?
Sounds reasonable.
That's a great idea, Bob.
Let me pause just a moment. Okay, Kathy, we, I want to make sure we still had you. We lost your video feed.
Yeah, well, that's why you lost me completely. So I would like to recap what the last thing was, or for you to do it.
Yeah, Bob, did you catch the first piece, which was the statute connection?
Yes, I did.
The second request was to include at least one line in there, recognizing that these meetings by the CPAT would be under, they'd be open meetings. If you're amenable to that. Bob, do you see it?
That, that would be good. And I have, I have another question here that really, I think, I think it needs to be reworked some under advisory scope. There's a reference to NCGS 168, 168. I, I have dealt with this a long time, you know, about disclosing, you know, public records. There's, there's obviously, you know, a lot of things can be disclosed, but on the other hand, there's a lot that, you know, cannot be disclosed. And we, we really need to sort of emphasize that somehow or another, you know, not put the statute in here, but we, we need to make it, and not only 168, 168, but Chapter 132, you know, that, that is, that's, that's a, the statute that covers everything. Now, 168, 168 is related to the records of an employee, the personnel records. And there's a lot of other records I think and would expect that would be, you know, become involved or requested down the road. And I think it, the 160, I mean, the Chapter 132 ought to be put in, and maybe any other, any other related law with respect to disclosure of public records. I, I would ask maybe David, if you would, I don't know, I, I think, I think we could sort of work that in. Maybe, maybe you could, maybe you can pick up what I've said here, and just, I'd be interested in your input, okay?
Specifically, NCGS 132-1.4, which is criminal investigations and intelligence information records, which by that statute are not public records. It needs to be very clear upfront that this committee would not be, have access to, one, personnel records, and number two, criminal investigation or criminal information records. And I, I think we should, probably should cite that, that statute in particular, 132-1.4.
Well, and I, and that's what I was leading to. I think it should, because it, you know, once, you know, once, once this group gets together and they really get out on a fact bind and try to get certain information, it's got to be clear upfront. You know, there are certain hoops you got to jump through to get certain information. And you, mind boggling over the years, you know, you got to follow the statute to a tee. And so I would ask maybe, maybe take a look at that, that number, Article 5 advisory scope, and try to, well, you know, you're familiar with it. I mean, you can revise it, you know, to, I, I think you understand where I'm coming from. You know, we've got to be particularly careful. And particularly people that are serving on the commission, I'm assuming, you know, the folks on our won't be just real familiar with all of the statutes involving disclosure of public records. But anyway, I, I'll stop with that. Is anything else of a procedural nature, David, that, that you have seen going through that, that need, you know, because when this thing rolls out, you know, we want to have something that's procedurally tied. I know there's probably some substantive issues that's going to be evolved over time, but at least procedurally, you know, if we can get it close as we can now, I think it'd be a help. Can you think of anything else, David?
Well, I think it's just important to note, just as we just said, that this committee is advisory to the police chief as well as the city manager. It does not make decisions. And from that standpoint, it's no different from any of your other committees that you, that the city council has appointed, some by statute, others kind of ad hoc over the years. But it's important to note that you can't run a file of any other state statute, in particular, the ones that we've just pointed out, 168-168 personnel records. And that, of course, is very important, because that's where you get into trying to, you're, you're advising the police chief, but you're not getting into specific instances of, of person, of people, of your personnel. You're talking about the broader policy that you can look into and advise on. I would note too, that the state legislature last year, House Bill 916, had put forth a proposed enabling legislation. It would have been 168-289.3 Citizen Review Board. And now it did not get out of committee, and it did not become law. But that gives you some idea about what they had in mind. We are along the same lines. It's advisory. It's, it's not making any final decisions regarding personnel. It's all advisory.
Okay, one, one final thing back to 168, 168. A violation of that, I think is a misdemeanor too.
It is.
So, I mean, it's, I mean, it's serious stuff, right? I mean, I mean, I don't think you, I don't think anybody's receiving a big time, jail time, but, you know, we've got to be very careful in, in following these statutes. And I know particular men housed, you know, maybe Harden and, and Jeff, you know, people, you know, people are going to request stuff, and I, I know that both, both of you are familiar with it, but people coming in need to understand those limitations. But anyway, with that, I, I pretty much covered what I need to.
Thank you, Bob. Now, I think those are very good points to make, and, and especially that tie into the onboarding process, to make sure that incoming board members are aware of what that scope is and what the statute limitations are. Other council comments, questions?
The only comments that, that I'll make, you know, I find it interesting, I was talking to Harden, that we've had zero comments on our online forum versus, what did he say, 1,200 about the, the chickens? And I was real interested in a lot of these red line additions, where they came from. And Aliments Agents for Change, according to Harden, made a lot of the recommendations. And, and then I, I really inquired about, are these Burlington residents? Are these people that live in the city of Burlington? This is a, this is a Burlington committee. It's a Burlington charter. It's, the, the whole formation is based on us and how we operate. You know, a lot of, I know a lot of work went in with Reverend, Reverend Covington and Michael Graves and Dorothy Arborough. I've talked to Michael Graves about it extensively. And I'm not ready to, I, I'm not ready to vote on this with all of these red line changes, because I believe that the, the document has morphed a little bit. And, and I just want to get comfortable with some of the ushering that, that maybe Aliments Agents for Change has included in this document, because the document is a community police advisory team for quality of policing and for trust and confidence. And that was kind of how we started down this road. And we've gotten pigeonholed a little bit. And, and some of the things I'm concerned about, whether or not we're going to run a foul of potential hampering of our ability to even get federal grants. I, I talked to Harden about that specifically. He said he was made aware of the question that concerned me about a week ago, what you can and cannot require people to do and still receive federal grants under the current administration. So given Bob's comments, which I agree 100% with, I, I would be fine going back to the 9-4 version that we released on 9-14, and, and adding the article that, that, that clearly states, and Harden helped me, I think it was Article 13, that shows how reviews and, and future changes will be made, just like some of our other boards and commissions, and, and then get feedback from our actual CPAT advisory team members on how the, the charter should evolve, similar to what we're doing with our U D O. We put a U D O out there, and we're reviewing it on a, on a perpetual basis to make some text amendments and changes, but let the actual CPAT team come up with those. That would be the only way I would be comfortable with it as quick as tomorrow.
Thank you, Jim, for the comments.
Mr. Butler, I think one other section that I had stricken myself was Article 4, based on council feedback previously about council's appointing members and not getting recommendations from the city manager and police chief.
Correct. And there's some text, there's sort of some text changes that doesn't really change the substantive element of it that, that I agree with. But as, as this thing starts deviating a little bit, that, that's where I would have a bigger concern.
If I could too, just, just comment on, on the, the previous conversation in reference to some of Bob's references to statutes and David's responses. And this is no disrespect to you, Harden, or either you, Chief Smythe, but at, at what point in time, or do you, you all see the city attorney's role in this process in reference to responding to, to specific situations or questions, or how does that play into the, and then this process going forward?
If you, let me chime in, boss. I, I think, you know, I use David regularly for queries from the media and other folks to, to vet what their question is, and whether we can lawfully comply or not. I think this is in that same space, right? There's some things that are easily releasable. I've done it before. It's public facing data. It's, it's in an annual report. I push that out. I don't call David on that, right? There's some that it, it's a hard no, right? You're going to call me and ask for, you know, the names, dates of birth, and social security numbers of every employee. I know to say no to that, I don't have to call David. But in that middle space, I call David and get advice. And I think this is exactly that.
That, that's, that's, that's what I'm trying to make sure everybody understands is, is this is a, a, a team effort here. And there might be situations where we just need an interpretation, a legal interpretation.
Yep, you bet. Not, not bashful in trying to get that from Mr. Huffman. He's very responsive to us.
Kathy, any, any feedback?
Well, I, I guess the one thing that I was talking about is really almost, I mean, it's too insignificant to matter. I guess the question that's being raised for me now is, I, I'm not sure that I understand what Jim is asking for, and what his issues are with the new document specifically. Are there particular articles that are a problem that need to be addressed, or is it just the overall tenor of the, of the commission itself, or the?
Well, the overall tone and tenor of some of the changes that have been made, you know, I, I fully understand the value and the need for addressing a lot of the racial concerns that are included in this document, and the, and very much the purposeful efforts of those that have worked with us prior to November, prior to September 4th, of all the items that we're trying to get in there. But I, I'm a little concerned that maybe there's a national narrative or some other kind of narrative creeping in here that I'm not fully comfortable with until I sit down with the chief and Harden and kind of vet through this, because I didn't, I wasn't sitting with these people when they made their recommendations as to what this should look like. So I just want to be real clear about the scope and purpose and everyone's comfortability with it. Because again, I do believe that race is a big piece and a, a, a guiding, guiding factor, but this is, we're formulating, we're forming, forming a community police advisory team to receive feedback, input, and guidance from the community on policing in general, including but not limited to racial issues. Race is a big piece of it. I, I fully agree with that 100%. But there's some other things as well that sort of get glazed, glazed over a little bit with some of the insertion of the requests of possibly Aliments Agents for Change. I'm not sure. And I just want to be sure I'm comfortable with that, after talking to the, the chief and to Harden about it as well. You know, and I don't want to see us go down a path that could cause us harms, put us in harm's way monetarily. I've read a couple of interesting documents, and Harden, you might can chime in to this, but to require participation in a racial equity learning opportunity annually, I don't know. That may be, that might, may violate us from receiving federal funds. I don't know that we can include that in there. I don't know if that's a quasi-city thing. And Harden, you, you were just made aware of this yourself, you said, when I brought it up. I mean, you want to give some feedback on that?
Yes, sir. There's a, there's a federal executive order, President Trump, I think, goes into effect November 21st, that, and I, I don't, I don't have the document in front of me, but I'll try to do the best I can from memory, that says you can't force someone into a training scenario or a training situation that makes them feel uncomfortable, or, or, and if others on the staff are familiar, can jump in. But I think we are seeking some advice from school of government. I, I, my, my assumption is school of government probably, if they don't, don't already have a blog post, is probably coming soon, that would give some advice on what that means. And I think there's some, trying to get some clarification. Does that apply to federal governments? Does it also apply to state and local governments? I think our assumption is it applies to any local government that receives federal funds, if you want to continue to receive those federal funds. But obviously, that's an area where we want to get a legal, you know, a legal opinion on. And that, that opinion obviously applies not just to Burlington, but would apply to all cities in the state. So I don't know if anybody else on staff wants to add to that, but HR Director Jamie Joyner, I had that conversation, Mr. Butler, about a week ago, you know, two or three days before you and I had talked.
I think it's a very reasonable item to, to dig further into. So Jim, based on your comments, I, I'm not comfortable jumping back to that version. I feel like there have been some good pieces put in this. But with items brought up tonight, would council be comfortable moving this item to the November 17th agenda to give us an additional two weeks for folks to meet, for the wordsmithing of the exact statute and chapter numbers to be included, and for folks to review? Is that amenable for folks?
It certainly is for me.
Okay.
I, I, I would agree. I, I'd like to take a look at everything. I focus on procedural stuff. And with remarks made tonight, I'd like to look back at the substance, and that would give me a little more time. I, I believe, you know, I believe there's one thing, and Harden even mentioned it in one of his emails, is that let's say we do continue this, you know, till the second meeting in this month. I, yeah, I believe the suggestion, the recommendation, Harden, is to go ahead and, and receive, you know, feedback tomorrow evening, you know, people sort of expecting that. I think e, even though we may continue the thing, it sounds like we're heading in that direction. I think it would be good to proceed with that. And, and I'm, I'm assuming all of you would agree too, you know, since people sort of geared up in my comments. So you haven't said that, you know, continuing the thing, I think makes sense to me.
Yeah, I'd be curious to, either to continue the public hearing, or to hold another public hearing, just noting that tomorrow is election night. And this CPAT is incredibly important that it, it have as much community feedback and guidance as possible. And folks may have other things on their mind tomorrow evening. So I think November, keep a more organic venue for that feedback without distraction.
Well, I, I don't, I don't really have any problem with that either. You know, I know the suggestion was made earlier, if indeed, it wanted, and we've done it in the past, would actually continue. If indeed it wanted, and we've done it in the past, would actually continue the public hearing. And also too, quite frankly, it, uh, it may very well be another document here for people to look at. There may be some changes, you know, this is evolving and it may, you know, uh, it, it may be good just to continue the hearing as well as the issue generally over. So I'm comfortable with that too. So.
Attorney Huffman, I'm going to call on you real quick just to make sure. Is it appropriate to continue the hearing or is it best to close that one and re-advertise another hearing?
Are you talking about continuing the public hearing to beginning tomorrow evening?
Yeah.
So in other words, you won't hear anybody tomorrow evening. You're just continuing the public hearing.
Request is that if folks are there, as per previous meetings, we've asked if they're there and they're ready to make comment, that we accept that comment at the time.
You can do either way. You can continue it. You can continue it all over all together, or you can have a public hearing tomorrow and continue the public hearing to the next meeting to keep going. Sure.
Okay, great. All right, thank you. So we'll, uh, we'll consider that continuation tomorrow, uh, as properly motioned.
So the, so we're prepared, uh, and, um, Ms. Smith can be prepared. So most, go ahead, hear comments tomorrow and then maybe hear comments again on the 17th.
Exactly.
Yes, sir.
I would like to hear comments tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, and recognizing there may be some additional red lines to that document in the time between the, the November 3rd and November 17th meeting.
Okay. And thanks to our savvy staff people, I now have information, uh, Mr. Butler, it's Executive Order 13950 is the federal order combating race and sex stereotyping. So we'll, we'll have a report, uh, to council before the 17th as well on that.
I do appreciate the, the considerations of that article in there. Um, I think our, one of the things I appreciate significantly about our boards and commissions is the developmental opportunity for our residents, not only to provide their leadership and expertise, but also to build their own skillset. And so to include opportunities, however it be phrased, for them to access training or experiences that help them better contribute to the community, I think is incredibly important. So I appreciate that article being included. Just need to make sure we get the, the legal phrasing of it spot on. I, I did have one request for council too, on the, the final article regarding, um, review. Scroll to the bottom of my document, Article 13. What are thoughts on having a more regular or more frequent review for the first year? Whether we do it every six months and then move to an annual? Or are we comfortable with kind of doing it as needed?
I think if, 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 if there was something substantive that was relevant and everybody agreed quickly, we could, we could just act accordingly. And I think if something's relevant, if the chief says, hey, this is what's coming, this is the feedback I'm getting and, and he's in agreement that, that some change would be beneficial, I wouldn't want to wait a year.
No.
And, and, and I might not even want to wait three months. I mean, it may be good enough that we need to go ahead and address it.
Okay. So just to approach it with the mindset that this is an iterative process, it's new territory.
Especially out of the gate, you know, there's going to be a lot.
Yep. Okay.
Totally, totally new board. It's going to be some things, it's going to be hard to anticipate. And, and really anything, you know, like Jim, you say substantive or otherwise, you know, it'd be good to go ahead and take it up and not just arbitrarily wait three months or 12 months. So I, I agree. Let's take them up as they come if they need to be addressed.
Yeah.
Yeah. And Mr. Mayor, I'll share with you that that was really consistent across some of the groups, right? It was kind of the chicken or the egg argument, right? You know, uh, we want to have your input. If you're on the team, we definitely want your input, right? But we can't form the team until we have a baseline document to start that from. And so we're like, yeah, we're, we're going to have to do something that gets us started and then absolutely come back and refine that. And there's probably a big sweep right up front to clean up to what they think it looks like. And then if that meets y'all's perspectives and then, yeah, Mr. Butler, down the road, another tune and another tune or whatever, right? But a, a big lift up front that's pretty quick and then come back again, again iteratively, if you say it that way. That, uh, yeah, we, we agree, I think, with the people who gave input as well as Harden and I, we all know that's really the right way to come at this.
Very good. Any other questions, council comments on this side of our agenda? All right, Harden, chief, appreciate y'all both. Um, and just a reminder, folks, public comment will be accepted tomorrow evening. All right, item C on our agenda, Boards and Commissions reports. Doesn't look like we have any reports. Manager, has that changed?
No, there are no reports.
Okay. Um, there'd be city manager report next.
I, I don't have anything, Mr. Mayor. Um, I think everybody is aware that tomorrow's election day, probably the least worst kept secret in the history of the United States. But because of the election day, the city council meeting will begin at 7:30 PM tomorrow instead of seven, for those who are watching this evening.
Very good. Any other council comments before we conclude our meeting?
Mayor, just one quick question. Since we've got a couple more hours, could we just run back through everything to make sure everybody's on board? Just kidding.
We can have the clerk read the minutes back to us if you'd like.
One thing I, I'd like to mention, Harden mentioned earlier, uh, Morgan Laster's name. I, I, I'd just like to say publicly to thank, uh, Rachel Kelly, Morgan Laster and John Byrne for the, for the really quality work they do in terms of getting information out, um, for the organization. Uh, they've taken it to a whole nother level, uh, have, I think, incorporated all options and avenues to get information out to people, which is what we're supposed to do, to, to give people the opportunity to, to respond if they wish or to comment. So, uh, those three, uh, I think just do an outstanding, outstanding job.
Very good. Um, final note, uh, on the voting and election stuff, our staff has put together some great resources on the city website and through social media. So for those listening in, uh, if you do have any questions about voting or the election tomorrow, you can access those. And as always, through the Alance County Board of Elections. It's always exciting to see so many folks engaging in the, uh, political process because that makes our community stronger. So, all right, without any further questions, council is adjourned until 7:30 tomorrow evening for our regular council meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Bye. Take care.